You'll recall the stacks of paper that Ed was always trying to shuffle through.
Yeah, I'm a truck.
Right. It, you know, I'm, you guys have all been in my office, you see there's an IBM Selecting Typewriter and there's, you know, how much of an early adopter I am. But, but it is handy to have, you know, the, the hyperlink and it just goes right to the back of documentation for that item. And I think it'd be worth a try, but let's get on out before we never. Is there, is there motion anybody would like to make?
I'm glad you said Jim that, you know, you'd like to see us work with them because I've done it on four of the boards. So I would, I would like to, to do that and it's a slow process, a lot of boards, it takes time to move people.
So your motion is whoever wants it, get it.
Yes.
That's all four of you can stick with the old school law.
We call it old school.
We're not using the.
So we have a motion from Councilwoman Williams Harper.
I'll second that.
And the motion is if you want it, you can get it.
Yeah, if you don't, yeah.
No, no one's going to.
And then I might move into.
Yeah, it convinces you, but no pressure.
Okay, is that clear enough? Okay. Uh, we have a motion and a second, so any further discussion? All in favor?
I don't want one. Any problems?
So, no. Um, I noticed that our superintendent has showed up, so we will backtrack to item one. Mayor Robertson, White Pine County School District Superintendent Adam Young, discussion only, presentation on Nevada Association of School Superintendents. How do they say that?
Invest.
Invest.
Yes, it looks funky, it's, but it doesn't sound funky.
All right, invest, initiative to improve educational outcomes in Nevada.
Thank you. May I?
Yes. You may have to move back just a little bit for the screen.
We wish that we can read here.
And it's really nice that we're showing this.
We're making sure we're aligned with this before we vote it on count.
Strike one.
That's not a tab.
Chapter one.
That's not what we do.
See, I brought a backup plan. I'll send those around. I've got too much time trying to set up.
Oh, there we go. This wasn't funny.
Oh.
We're, we're on now. They had their YouTube, I'm not sure if that's, you want to. I'm assuming that's class related. Well, thank you. Is that thing up? It's, it doesn't really work, but it's working for the online people, so.
All right.
I can do it in a couple of words.
Sounds good. Uh, members of the council, Mayor Robertson, thank you very much for, for having us tonight. I want to make sure to recognize a few of, uh, our board members who are here tonight. Amy Fulmer and Terry Kerrigan, Morgoff and Paul Johnson, our CFO is here as well and appreciate your support. And thank you for allowing me to come and speak with you tonight about, uh, what I feel is the very, very most critical educational issue that we have. And sorry, Councilwoman Elliott, I should have heard this twice today. I am here, of course, as your local school district superintendent, but, but more than that, I am here tonight on behalf of the other sixteen superintendents of the state of Nevada because this is a collective effort, um, to try to bring attention to what is a longstanding issue within our state. And that is the matter of how we, how we fund education. I'll be working kind of towards a grand finale and so I'll, I'll be referencing that, um, as we go on through the presentation. But the first part of it, I just, I, I want to spend talking just a little bit about, um, the way that we measure some of our outcomes in Nevada. And my, I should have brought my glasses tonight because, is it okay if I actually do this? Because these couple's feet might make a difference in my ability to actually see the screen there. So our purpose is, it just, the big one that I really, really want to focus on is generating synergy around this, this investment in education. And as Mayor Robertson stated at the beginning, the MB that's in that invest, it is, uh, part of the marketing, right? It stands for, stands for Nevada. And that invest proposal that we, as superintendents, have collectively, uh, generated comes from a significant body of work that's been put in by the Commission on School Funding, which is a legislatively appointed body, uh, going back to when the, the new per people funding, uh, model was implemented in two thousand and nineteen. Our own Paul Johnson is a member of that commission. There are other chief financial officers from around the state as well as superintendents, appointees from the governor, appointees from the legislative body. So our, our platform, our invest platform is not, um, pulled out of the air. It's, it's pulled out of significant body of research that has been conducted by the experts on education funding in our state. So, um, this, oh yeah, that's, that's, that's perfect. I also want to make sure to, to point out that this, uh, platform is aligned with the policy level decisions that are made by our state board of education. And this slide that's up right now, the, the, I guess it's the, the, the fourth one on the page on, uh, has the little, uh, kind of graphics of goal one, goal two, et cetera. These are the state driven improvement goals that the Commission on School Funding has examined to say, if we want to accomplish these as a state of Nevada, here are the resources that we're going to need to actually be able to do that. Okay? So, yeah, you can advance there, I'll help you. I want to spend a second, starting with the outcomes that we all currently are attending to within our state. And then I'm going to highlight, um, some flaws that exist in the way that we measure those because that's a big part of what, what I want to try to emphasize as well. So when I came last year, you'll remember that I showed you our local district data and the, uh, progress, or should I say the lack of regression that occurred through the COVID years here locally as compared to what went on with the rest of the states. Last year was, it was a tough year, um, for, you know, for everybody, right? But in schools, it was really, really challenging. And as a state, we saw a lot of backwards movements in some of these scores that are measured by the smarter balanced assessment. That wasn't the case locally and we were really, really proud of that. And, and I was proud of the work that our educators and families have put in on that. So you can see on this slide that shows this data here, the math outcomes as measured by this one test. There's been a really nice rebound from last year coming into this year as people, you know, talk about learning loss and we try to provide all these different interventions for students to recover some of the grounds that they didn't gain when, uh, when COVID was on. So those are things to be proud of, but again, I'm going to talk more about the problem with that particular measure here in just a minute. This next one shows the, the English Language Arts outcomes. And again, this is measured by one particular assessment that's administered one time in the school year. You can see we, again, we, we didn't regress last year and we made some forward progress this year locally. And as a state, we made some really nice progress both in elementary and middle school. The dips that you see in the high school numbers there, uh, that is a phenomenon that's occurred nationwide. Trying to get high school kids back on track is not an easy task once they've made up their minds that, um, there may not be a reason to do that. So the, uh, the positive progress we really see is especially with our younger students, something to be really, really proud of and celebrate. Um, middle school students at, at our own White Pine Middle School here, I, I hope you all got the word in the podcast and all these other things that we try to do to celebrate the, the good work that's going on here locally. But our middle school staff, um, which Mr. Trask is a part of here, has outperformed middle schools across the entire state in the last couple of years. It's really something to be excited about. So, um, yeah, this, this is a, there's, I made a few edits in this to try to streamline. So this, the best slide to look at now is the one that says, um, most recent, uh, graduation outcomes. And there's a little cloud bubble that's in it if you're looking at the hard copies. And this shows our, our statewide graduation rates over the course of the last five or six years. It also shows our White Pine graduation rate for this last, uh, graduation year between two thousand and two. Statewide, and once again, we rebounded. You can see the steady increase across the entire state in the attainment of the Dats diplomas since two thousand and seventeen. This has been a focus that every school district has really zeroed in on is how, how can we challenge students to do more so that when they, uh, reach that milestone of graduation, they are more prepared? Because employers are asking for, for more and different and better skills than they have, you know, historically. So what can we do in our high schools to try to meet that challenge and have students ready for the things that they want to do once they graduate? So there's a positive trend there. Then you can also see the CCR diplomas, that stands for College Career Ratingness. That's an extra step up above the advanced diploma that, that requires students to not only attain additional coursework in a certain GPA, but also a CTE endorsement, career and technical education, uh, and, and/or dual credit attainment. The thing that I think is noteworthy to look at with our local data here is that, um, the forty percent of our advanced diplomas, the fourteen percent CTE, or, um, um, I'm sorry, the fourteen percent of the college and career rating diplomas, those are non-duplicative, uh, numbers. So really what that means is that more than half of our students are graduating with some type of additional certification by the time they're done with their four years of high school. So about forty-five percent of them are still, uh, you know, are still graduating with a standard diploma. And then the other fifty-five percent of them aren't doing more. Uh, and, and I think that's something that we should, we should celebrate as a community. Okay. CTE outcomes again, this is career and technical education. I'll speak a little bit about this earlier and as I talk about these things, um, the reason will become evident in just, in just a few short minutes if you're ever looking. So here locally, of course, we have our, our incredible culinary program, we have our welding program, auto technology, computer science, web design developments, um, graphic design, a, a real plethora of options for students to take. This year we added a new CTE program with, which Dr. Harper is, uh, spearheading, which trains future teachers for us as a school district. We're extremely excited about that. So with, with this, with this local data here, eighty percent of our high school students are involved in some type of CTE program. And forty-five percent of them actually complete the two or three year sequence and pass all of the tests that are required in order to be completers in the course. And then we have another fifty percent who are dual credit completers. If you look again at the statewide number and, and I just want to highlight this as well, going back to two thousand and nineteen, you can see that, that our educators statewide, not just here in White Pine, but statewide, our educators are working very hard to make sure that they communicate with students and families that you need to be involved in these college and career rating programs so that when you graduate, you're ready to do something. That's what our, that's what our employers are asking for. Don't, don't just send us a kid who has a diploma, you need a kid who has a diploma that can do things. Okay. Now, I want to take a little bit of a detour here because all of these indicators that I have, uh, described so far, they're really, um, they're very, very narrowly focused. If you think about that, you know, the English Language Arts data and the math data that I shared with you before, these numbers are based on one test. It's administered one time per year. The students and the teachers get the results of that test six months after they take it, when the student's already in the next grade. I think Mr. Trask could probably speak of the frustration that exists, uh, as a professional. When you get that data and there's literally nothing you can do about it. There's a real disconnect with the way that our state measures, um, success and failure of students. Can you imagine, uh, as an eighth grade student or, or a fourth grade student, would be the more dramatic, third grade students, um, when you, when you get that score in the mail and, and you are labeled, this is almost criminal in my opinion, but you're labeled, my third grade year was a success or, or my third grade year was a failure because of one score on one test. And our argument and position as superintendents is that there are many, many, many better ways to measure student learning that are much more authentic and that are meaningful to students, to families and to teachers than the, the model that's currently being used. So part of our platform is that that needs to change. And actually, school districts across the state are using many measures that are different than those, but we still have to use those. And part of, part of the funding problem, which all, again, I'm working on my way to, is the hundreds of millions of dollars of contracts that go to, to testing companies to administer those tests, to score them, to develop them, all the research that goes into that. It's not that they're bad tests, but they're very, very costly and they're cumbersome and they're not meaningful. So this slide here, um, in your handouts, it's the one that's titled, Other More Authentic Measures. I just got done with two senior presentations that I went through, uh, to tonight. Dr. Harper is one of the teachers of that course. If you want to think of an authentic way to measure student learning, that's a good way to do it. Uh, any of you who have attended those presentations and the number of you who have had students who, who have done that, it's from the heart, it's all encompassing. They talk about, uh, the things that they have learned that can never be measured on a test. And they talk about their plans and some of the activities that they've gone through through the course of, of senior achievement that helped them develop a good life trajectory. That's an authentic way to measure student learning. Another really great way, one that I'm really proud of, is the day before, uh, Christmas break here in, in the district. Now, I just as a side note, if you, if, if you ever want to visit one of our schools, don't come on the day before Christmas break. Okay? It's, it's a challenging day. But one of the reasons that we developed this service activity is, um, it's tough to get kids to, to be convinced that, that, uh, that day is, it needs to be a productive day. So rather than fighting with them about that, how can we try to, uh, create an atmosphere where they're, they're going to do something that's really innovative and exciting that they haven't done yet this year? And that's going to take their mind off the fact that, oh my gosh, I have to go to school for one more day. So this year we had advisories plan trips to the care center that day. We had students who knitted, uh, beanies and scarves and mittens. Another group of students who went to the animal shelter. Different groups of kids who wrote thank you notes to kind of underappreciated folks in our community. All sorts of things that, um, are, are a lot more authentic and meaningful and valuable as learning experiences than sitting down and taking a test that, you know. So you get the, the point of that. Um, and let's, let's go ahead and move forward there. There's a couple of pictures up here that illustrate some of these authentic, um, learning experiences. And I just want to highlight the one that is, um, there, there's two students standing above kind of a, a wagon or a wheelbarrow. And it's this slide that's down at the bottom, right-hand corner. This is in Lion County, in the Smith Valley area. And students in this community, uh, raise turkeys as, as part of their authentic learning experience. They basically start from, you know, the embryonic stage, uh, nurture them to hatching, feed them, take care of them, clean them, wash them, grow the turkeys. And then they auction them off to the community at Thanksgiving. Once the auction occurs, then they do the slaughtering and the cleaning, um, all, all of the stuff that goes into getting a bird ready to actual, actually, you know, give to a family so that it can be cooked for the Thanksgiving dinner. And then they even pardon a couple of turkeys in the spirit of, of Thanksgiving. So imagine all the things that go into that. The, the writing and reading skills, the communication skills that go along with communicating, um, with, with the families and the businesses that are going to buy those. The math skills that are involved in determining what the budget's going to be and how much of a profit you're going to make, how you're going to reinvest that for future, uh, future endeavors and such. That's the type of authentic learning experience that I want my own children and grandchildren to be able to have and that I want for our students. The more we can focus on things like that and get away from, um, you know, you have to pass this test, I think the better that education is going to be in the state. So, um, yeah, and let's. Yeah, no, no, that's perfect. Yeah, so, so let's talk about the tension here. And I'm, I'm working my way towards this first part of our invest platform. Do these current measures actually communicate what's most important to our students and families? They give us some good information, I shared some of that information with you, but it's so incomplete. And more important than that, one of the things that, because the determining factor in what a school offers, sadly, always comes down to dollars. That is always the limiting factor. And so if a school and a student are being held accountable for a test, that is the reality of what the focus is going to be for that student in that school. And so how do we change that? We have to change the metric. That's the only way that you can do it. Okay? So thinking, yeah, that's perfect. Thinking about how, how do we change that? What if we did develop additional STEAM opportunities? If you haven't been to David Norman in the last four years to see what happens on their Monday STEAM clubs and their Friday STEAM, uh, activities, it's so, it just makes my heart happy. It is incredible. I invite you to come and check out what students are doing on that campus. What if we funded more CTE opportunities? You get the idea. As an arts person, I always think we need more arts. We actually also need more athletic opportunities for students. All of those things cost money. So the first leg of this invest platform is actually putting the dollars in that are going to fund programs like that. My dad, uh, many of you know, was a car salesman. He sold Chrysler's or Dodges and Jeeps. And, you know, my, my first car was a nineteen sixty-four Dodge Dart. There's a difference between the nineteen, I, I know Mayor Robertson's a classic car, uh, connoisseur. I don't know if a nineteen sixty-four Dodge Dart qualifies as a classic car, but there's a big difference between the nineteen sixty-four Dodge Dart that I was driving in high school and like the Chrysler Fifth Avenue that my dad was selling to his, uh, more affluent customers back in the day. You do get what you pay for. It, it, it does come down to that. If we want those better opportunities, like I was describing with those authentic measures of learning, it has to come from somewhere. All right, let's move to the next little section here. So a big topic, and this is the second part of working this platform, is school safety. So if we are looking at, and Terrell, if you want to click, just click the, yeah, there you go, that's perfect. Thank you. There's a, a survey that all of the students across Nevada take every single year, it's School Culture Reinforcement Survey. And what it does is it helps us as educational leaders get a sense of how are students feeling about our schools? One of the biggest issues that we're dealing with coming out of COVID right now is actually not the academic performance of students, although as I was explaining, that's something that we're working on. It's really, it's the mental health, it's the social emotional, it's the, um, kind of the affect, like what's going on up here? And, and, and those things have really changed in society, honestly, but certainly with young people. All of us have a little bit more life experience than a twelve or thirteen year old young person does. So like, we can kind of reason our way through that this is going to come and people are going to start feeling better at some point in time. When you don't have that life experience, it's pretty tough to logic your way through, um, you know, when, when this is going to get better, when maybe people are going to stop being like so crazy. So if you look at these, these two, uh, charts here, one of them says adults working at the school treat all students respectfully. This is our own local data here. You can see that there's a vast majority of our students who agree with that statement. I feel like I belong in this school. There's a vast majority of students who strongly agree or agree with that statement. But you can also see that there are students who don't feel that way. And so part of the challenge, uh, uh, in, in schools is what do we do to reach those students? Remember I was describing the tension before of, uh, in, in the public discourse sometimes, uh, education in Nevada really takes a leap. And so then teachers, principals, everybody's focusing on what do we do to raise these fill in the blank test scores? When really, this is what we need to be focusing on, is these students who, who are feeling like, I don't belong in my school. But again, there's, you know, it's, it's kind of a scarcity mentality. If, if you only have so many resources, those resources have to go somewhere. So what don't you do because something is not going to get you? Okay? So let's get back to the next one and talk a little bit about the tension, which I, I. Yeah, no, you're good. Which I already kind of elaborated on. The white bullet that I'd like to have you look at here, and it's the bottom right-hand slide again. I started my career as, as a teacher in nineteen ninety-nine. We, as schools, are being asked to do and are doing far more for students than we were in nineteen ninety-nine. And in nineteen ninety-nine, we were doing a lot more than we were in, like, back in the day when I was an actual student. Just as an example, we do have social workers and, uh, LCSWs in our schools. We didn't have those five years ago, at all. That wasn't even a thought that we had in nineteen ninety-nine. Why do we have those things? Because our students need them. But what has gone away because those things are now there? Because as I'll show you in a minute, that the funding level, the expectations do this, but the funding level, and it does that. So we have to make tough choices. So, um, what if we really created more flexibility for students to create that belonging that they want to have in the mother of their school? And what if we better funded the supports that we really know are critical? Not just the academic ones, but the social emotional mental health ones. And then what if, what if we actually quit focusing so much on some of those, uh, And then what if, what if we actually quit focusing so much on some of those, uh, you know, really discrete measurements? And talk, and talk more about some of the things that as an employer of nearly 300 in our community, that I want my employees to have generosity, kindness, teamwork, collaboration, those different types of things that no test is actually going to measure. So that works us to this priority of, of Invest, which is all about the supports that students need in order to read some of those academic goals. I'm going to talk about the actual money in a minute because of those, those, there's a lot of commas in some of those numbers there. Okay. So this is, we're rounding to third base right now, and I appreciate your time and your patience. This last section is going to talk a little bit about the value of a teacher, the value of the workforce that we need to be able to have the type of education system that we want to have. I, I listed a bunch of studies here for you that if you're really interested in empirical research, you can look those up. They all say the same thing. I listed like five of them, I mean, there's hundreds, there's hundreds of them. But really, the thing that you can pay attention to and that any of us knows kind of in our hearts is the very last bullet on that slide. If you had a teacher that changed your life, then you know the value of a good teacher. And there is, there's nothing that can be done to change what that value is. I became an educator because of one of those teachers. And I hope that I've had an impact on, on other people. But as more has been added to the plate, um, with public expectations, my generation of educators is nearing retirement. And it's not a field that people are choosing to go into anymore. Uh, and we're, we're in real trouble with the teacher pipeline unless some things change. So yeah, that's a perfect timing here, Mr. Trask. The average educator's salary is significantly lower than that of other similarly educated professionals. This is quantitative research here. That second bullet is important to look at because the gap has widened from 1994 to 2015. So that, that gap's always been there, but it's bigger now than it was back in the day. And then again, there's kind of this public discourse of, oh, you're going to be a teacher. Okay. A quick personal story on that. My oldest graduated with his master's degree, um, from BYU last fall. This was a kid who wanted to be a teacher ever since he was probably second grade, clear until he graduated from high school. Um, when he got to, to his post-secondary education, he figured out that his starting salary in the information systems field was going to be about four times what it would be as a teacher. And he, that, that was the end of his dream of teaching. So that is not a unique story. That, that happens a lot. We'll go one, oh, we know, that's a perfect one. The one I want to, I'll port out here, this is, I keep hitting these last, the bottom right slides here. Nevada is the fourth worst in the nation for educator pipeline. That's since the middle school become crashing down. You're going to need something about it. Okay, so here's what Invest addressed. What if we actually paid educators for the time that they work? There is no educator that, that works their contract in hours. They all work more than that. But in this profession, you're, you know, you're expected to just kind of do that as part of your job. I think we need to change that. If we can offer a more competitive wage to get our best and brightest to come into the field, again, how does this tie? It ties because your, your life, our lives, were all changed by a really great teacher. And we need to keep our best and brightest coming into the profession in order to make that continue. So we'll, we'll go ahead and advance. This one's got a little bit of sticker shock on it. Again, you can see lots of commas there. But this is all about the teacher workforce. And it's all about recognizing that if we want different outcomes for our students, we have to have the adults in place who are guiding them to get there. Those other two, uh, parts of, of Invest are about these supports themselves for students. This is about the people who provide the services to the students. I want to read this quote to you. And then as Mr. Trask clicks through this, which you don't need to do it yet, but it's going to update the presentation, so it's not going to appear on this. It's a little suspenseful. But it'll show you what the, the, the current numbers are. But this was Governor Grant Sawyer back in 1963. Nevada ranks 13th in the nation in average teacher salaries. We are fifth in the Western United States. We rank 15th in the nation of pupil teacher ratio. We are eighth in the nation for median number of school years completed by persons 25 or older. We reputedly have the highest literacy rate in the nation. We are fourth in the nation on the basis of money spent per pupil. That sounds pretty great. So the first number is replaced with a 41st. The second number is replaced, I've got a lot of it here so I can see it, with a 49th, then a 46th, then a 42nd, and then a 47th. Let's go ahead and do the next one. This slide, thanks to the Commission on Educational Funding, uh, Commission on School Funding for providing this. This is the bottom left-hand slide. This shows per pupil spending for each, uh, state in the nation. That dotted line is the average, $13,489. You can see where Nevada falls there. The next slide is going to give you an even more recent report. This is from the Education Law Center. And it shows some of the same data, but it also shows what's happened in the last four years with regards to trends in spending across the nation. The pre, the, the pre and the post. So you can see Nevada's down there at 44th four years ago and has, has actually dropped to 47th in that last four years. Whereas other states have made policy changes and have, you know, Illinois is one, for example, that's made some, some revenue changes and has really weak fraud a lot of other people. Again, I'm here on behalf of all of my colleagues at the superintendent level. When we talk about how concerned are we right now? There is not a single person who is not either concerned or extremely concerned about having the level of funding necessary to address needs in staffing and student support. I want to highlight this too because despite the kind of public narrative sometimes that exists around education in our states, there's, there, and as I shared with you previously, there are things to celebrate. So we're looking right now at this slide and it has the bubble on it. Up here, it doesn't have the bubble yet, but I can hopefully try to translate this way a little bit. So over to the right, it shows, um, 2018 data from the National Quality Council's reports. And you can see that Nevada at that time was ranked 40th, uh, 40th in K-12 achievements. But if you move over to the left, you can see that-